Station like this. So we may have to order longer cords so that we can avoid having a car. We don't want a car, the front of one car and then the other front of the other car coming together because that would be illegal parking, correct Wayne? And if we encourage it at the electric charging station, people will start doing it all over downtown Culver. We don't want that. So we, we may have to add something here to reflect that. But I do think Bob also was talking about having no parking of golf carts on sidewalks or trails.
Right. Change each of it. Parking, something involved in the works.
Right.
Yeah, which we already amended for the trail part of it. So I, I think we should table it until we know what our ADA compliance issues are on the electric charging station.
I have another, just a suggestion. We're looking at this, there's another issue that comes up. As far as golf carts parking, I think that golf carts need to park in parking spaces, not wedge in, one down there by the cross from McCree's. The other day, and I don't know whose golf cart it was, but it was wedged in between the last parking spot and that little well, but half of the golf cart checking out in the end of the northbound lane. And then people are, you know, I think if people go to have a golf cart that park, they need to park in a parking space.
That would be already part of the rules. You have to operate it like a car, right Wayne?
That's the issue. See it always.
Yeah, I mean, to operate a golf cart, you have to operate it like a vehicle. So that would be covered under our current ordinance for golf carts. But if you see it, we should go ahead and enforce that.
And I've seen where there've been two golf carts in one parking spot because that's about the size of a car. They would, yeah. No, I got it. Okay, well then let's go ahead and table the parking ordinance. Next, regional stellar plan update.
Okay, the big update for that is I have collected some information on the regional electric sign, but not a whole lot. I haven't heard, I've heard from basically one other community and that was Plymouth and they don't have any policy for theirs. So I want to get back to you on that. I do have some thoughts on like not, not having us host everyone's birthday and the anniversary. And we have Lions Club does that. They can get a fee for it. We don't need to do that sort of thing, but I'm still putting that together for regional stellar. Um, the other big thing is that Blue Zones has started. You guys have probably seen some invitations to this because you're elected officials. Blue Zones is actually being brought to the county through the Health and Wellness Committee of the Regional Stellar Team, which is really called the Marshall County Crossroads Team. So the kickoff for that was tonight. Obviously I couldn't attend, but Amber is attending just to have someone from Culver there. And Marty Eusterbahn is also attending that. Tomorrow is an all day event where the Crossroads Team is presenting. I'm one of the people speaking at it as well as Marty and some, all the town reps throughout the Marshall County Crossroads Team. Then they have the focus groups in the afternoon that I'm sure they would love for you guys to attend. And then at five o'clock, there's a cocktail hour. There's also another event next week on the 30th that I think Amber's already sent invites out where they just want a small group of people from Culver to attend basically like a workshop at the Beach Lodge. And they asked for, you know, someone from the schools, someone from your main street organization, your town manager, you know, a handful of people. They're doing a real basic assessment as part of this Blue Zone initiative. This is being funded, all these consultants from Blue Zones, it's being funded through a grant that Marshall County Community Foundation receives. And that's why they're able to bring Blue Zones here. If you do some work on that, you'll understand a little bit about how Blue Zones gets funded. If the county and Blue Zones consultants decide to move forward, that's a whole nother level of funding and that would probably be a conversation among the Health and Wellness Committee, some stakeholders and businesses generally. It's sponsored by corporations. But anyway, I will report back to you after tomorrow's day long event. I'll probably write up a nice summary just to give you guys an idea of what took place there. And if you do want to attend one of those focus groups, I can send you a reminder of the time and where to go for that.
Jenny, what is Blue Zone?
Blue Zones is a, an organization that comes and works with communities on a designation of being Blue Zone. And what they do is they do a, a assessment of your community in terms of wellness. And they've studied communities across the world that have people who live to be 100 or older, who live healthier, long lives. Once they've done this assessment, they determine for you the top risk factors for your community and help you develop built spaces and policies and ways of combating those major health issues. So they may say the top six in our county are diabetes, blood pressure, mental wellness, et cetera. And then they actually with this funding that comes from mostly from corporations, they come back in and they train people to launch a Blue Zones initiative where that you measure how, how your outcomes are coming with those particular things. So in some communities, it could be diabetes and mental wellness. And ours, it could be, you know, a number of other things. So that's sort of the, there's only 61 Blue Zones in the world. And if Marshall County did this, we would be the first Indiana Blue Zone. So there's a lot of interest with some of the state agencies that we've worked with like Okra. And they would like to see if this could potentially happen. They've talked about working with Blue Zones in the past too. So they're kind of interested in what, what's going on here.
Thank you.
As far as other regional stellar plans, there's no further update. You know, we've got our park project and our trail project and that plan, and those are very early stages right now.
That is the regional. Let's move on to stellar plan update.
Okay, we'll cover those with the town manager report just because I've included them. For, for that one, it's more mainly down to three things. Quarterly reporting that Okra does, they've canceled that for this quarter. They're inundated with other grant opportunities at Okra right now. So I will get the quarterly newsletter out and give you guys a copy of that. Okra just said, please go ahead and submit one to us. So we'll submit it, but we don't have to meet in person. So some of the people who sit in on that, like Rich, we don't have to do that this quarter. Lake Max Phase Two, I do need your signatures on the contract for inspection of the trails. You guys had approved that pending Jim's review and pending Mike Reese adding a communication plan to that. That's been done. It's in the book now, so Bill's already signed it. The other four of you can sign it. And I've got to get that off too, end up very quickly. So be sure to make sure.
Be sure you sign it tonight before you leave.
Yes. Lake Max Phase Three, which is not really stellar project, but we talked about both of these together. So I will. One of the pieces of information the academies wanted in our agreement was to make the trail easement a 50 year easement. They did this when we did the academy trail going from Academy Road to our park. The, the issue with that is that particular phase of our trail was done with local dollars, not N dot dollars. So Jim and I want to make sure that a 50 year easement is acceptable to N dot because sometimes they look for permanent easements. So I have that question out to Mike Reese as well as N dot, waiting for an answer before we kick this back to Culver Academies. They were otherwise okay with the other things we had in that agreement and they were willing to do a permanent utility agreement or easement on that. So we were quite pleased with that. So once we get that answer, we'll get it off to the academies with our changes and look for signatures. And honestly, that's all I have for all of the stellar stuff.
Good. Manager report.
All right, we already covered what's going on with that electric vehicle charging station. Once we get our ADA approved, we can move forward with completing the installation of that. There is lots of reporting with that particular grant. So MACOG is going to kind of lead the way with the communities that got that grant, which is a good thing because we're not real familiar with this one. Paving and cracked ceiling. Bob's been in touch with the paving guys on a daily basis. They had to leave a few days for another job. They're coming back early next week. So we're expecting this to find, all the paving to finally be done on that community crossings grant. The only reason that really affects us is because MACOG has to do our street ratings. And so they really prefer to do it after the paving's done. And we did meet with an engineer today to talk about a segment of road that we would put in the next community crossing grant. And he said that there's a lot of work involved with these community crossing grants. You have to have estimates of costs. So you've got to have an engineer come in and take a look. So we're thinking rather than try to get this done for July of this year, that we submit our list for next year's January round. Bob and I have talked about it quite a bit. We talked with the engineer today about it. And that's, you know, trying to get that together in a month is, is going to be a real challenge. But anyway, the paving should be done next week. Same with State Route 10, we're kind of getting to that point of near completion. Well, Bob will end up getting a, you know, the last sort of list of to do's. We can actually skip over that, the rest of that. Under town manager updates, I've taken lots of notes because since Sunday night when I sent this, some things have changed. So bear with me. First, there's the property out on Tamarack that you guys might be aware of. It went before the BZA for a variance. It's a storage unit project. The owners of that project had their variance approved. Their attorney has reached out to me about annexation of that property. And so I have basically notified them that I'll let our attorney know about that and we will get together and have a meeting with them. Bill, I'll probably pull you into that and Jim, you as well. And then I've asked redevelopment if they might be interested in having someone engage on those conversations as well because it's zone C2, which means they're going to be interested in that being a Tiff property. So we'll, we'll keep CRC engaged at the very least and see if, where that heads. But I just wanted to give you a heads up because the annexation's going to land in the council room. And ultimately it'll be your decision if we annex that property.
Good.
Already talked about the stellar quarterly meeting, water on Main Street. I have forwarded you guys Mark Sullivan's opinion and the memo that he sent. I've printed that through your packets. Phil, do you want me to read this or?
I think we should read it into the minutes.
Okay. Then I'll hand it off to Karen. Um, it's coming from Midwestern Engineers. Dear Jenny, this letter is concerning our site visit to Culver and meaning with you to review drainage problems and several downtown building basements along Southland Street from just north of East Jefferson, south to East Madison Street. Although we are not sure of the age of the buildings in this area, they all appear to be substantially older, which we would guess to be 50 to 100 years old. It would be very common for buildings of this age to have wet basements. The source of the water could be groundwater or rainfall induced where water enters the basements around the perimeter of the foundation walls. Observing the adjacent town sidewalks, they appear to be in good condition and slip away from buildings. Adjacent town streets have curb and gutters to capture surface drainage. Therefore, we do not feel the town's infrastructure is causing the problem. In fact, the town's infrastructure is most likely keeping the problem on private properties from being worse than its current condition. We see nothing the town could do to improve the problem. Unfortunately, these are the problems property owners experience when owning a substantially older building. The solution to the problems need to be addressed by each individual property owner. We would recommend the property owners contact a company which specializes in basement waterproofing. Should you have any questions about the above information, please feel free to call or contact me and then this email address. And sincerely, Mark Solomon of Midwestern Engineers.
Thank you very much. I think what we should do now is give this letter to the property owners. Give a copy of this letter to the property owners. It says the town's position and let them digest it. This is a council thing.
I would move that we share this letter with the property owners in the area designated from just a little bit north of Jefferson to Madison.
That's a motion.
Did we share this, yes.
Second.
Second.
Motion been made in second that we share this letter from Mark Sullivan at Midwestern Engineers to the property owners describing the letter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, I will get that, a copy of that letter sent out to the property owners there. Um, next on the list that I had is electronic meetings. I think you guys probably saw that Jim worked on a resolution for electronic meetings. Karen and I are going to be attending a workshop on this, which is through a Zoom call workshop. So we thought we would give you guys some time to review what Jim did. And then in the meantime, if Karen and I have any feedback on Jim's draft, we would get that to Jim based on what we learned in the workshop. And then maybe put it on the next agenda.
Good.
You're going to find it, you're going to be able to add more conditions, more requirements if that's what you're inclined to do. So no problem with, with making it more strict, I guess what I'm saying. Probably not going to be able to go the other way.
Does that sound okay? All right.
Excuse me. What you just mentioned about there's going to be a Zoom call or something, you put something out to us, whether we wanted to dial into that or not. Can you refresh me the date and time?
It's next Wednesday.
30th?
The 30th.
Yep.
I believe it starts at nine.
Okay, thank you.
And I can forward that to.
Forward the information to the talent. How long is it?
It's a couple of hours. Actually, you probably have to come down and watch it with us. Yeah. We register for one.
Okay.
They do, they probably record it too though, where we can send.
They are recording.
We can send their recording out too, if you don't want to sit and watch it in town hall.
Well, that would be an exception. I don't have my calendar handy right now, but.
Sure. Okay, we already know about AC and heat in this room. Preserving Main Street grant, just an FYI that that was completed. We should learn if that is successful in terms of develop, develop Culver getting a final list on that by end of month, I believe. Skipping over the summer requests for documents because you know about that and skipping over Blue Zones, just be aware I'm out tomorrow for that. Emergency services agreement with Culver Academies. I was just telling Bill before the meeting tonight, I actually finally heard back from one of the schools I had reached out to and that was Notre Dame. Still waiting to hear from a number of other schools. Bill gave me some additional names of private schools we might try. But what I did learn from Notre Dame is that they have their own fire department on campus, but they do not have their own EMS. So they contract with EMS in this, for this, with the city of South Bend. She is going to forward me a copy of that contract just so we can see what that looks like. They also receive, the city of South Bend from Notre Dame, payment in lieu of taxes, which is called a pilot. That was part of the article that Jeff Kuhn sent out last time we had this discussion. She's, the gal I talked to who heads up their safety and operations that side of campus is going to see if she can dig up a copy of what that looks like. I might be able to track that down through the city or through the county. She believes that both the city and the county get a pilot from Notre Dame. And what she said was great about how their pilot is written. It is basically a donation in lieu of taxes and it is given to the city and county to use however they want. Doesn't necessarily have to be emergency services. So their contract on EMS covers that. When it comes to police, they hired for specific events and they worked with the local police to organize scheduling for that. Because as you guys know, a football game can bring in tens of thousands of people. So their athletic department actually pays for a lot of their events and they have other types of events as well. So a combination of all of those things are what Notre Dame pays for. And hopefully I'll get those contracts that she was suggesting. I potentially look at, Notre Dame is a lot different than our secondary high school. We don't have huge, we have plenty of big events for us, but we don't have the, the degree that Notre Dame obviously does. But it was just interesting to see how that works. And I'm trying to find more boarding schools like LaLamere was one I, I reached out to, haven't heard back from. There's plenty of private secondary high schools that don't have boarding. So they may not have emergency services to the level that a boarding school would. But anyway, I just wanted to let you know, starting to gather some information there. And, you know, Doug Bird has been great about discussing this with us and, and keeping an open mind. So, you know, I'll continue those conversations. I do have under utilities, because Bob wasn't sure if he would make it tonight. There's an alley approach on Winfield Street that's pretty mucked up. At the alley, it intersects with, it's like Winfield, the alley that comes to cross the street from Sally's house.
It's very in between.
It's, it's in really bad shape and it needs concrete. And Bob had the guys fill it with that temporary stuff. Well, we asked Rocky Bachman for a quote for that. And the quote is for $2,850 to have that repaired. And my recommendation is we have it repaired because some people have busted some fires on that. But I had, I put a homeowner right there sending me pictures of it and it's worst condition and the temporary fixed condition. And now back to its worst condition. So that's one of my motions for approval. That's not currently in your town manager report.
I did talk to Bob about that this afternoon and that's not that it doesn't probably need to be fixed, but that's not the only alley entryway in the town. So just, just be cognizant of the fact that we may get multiple requests in the future. You know, $3,000 a pop to fix these. I mean, there could be potentially 10 or 20, I mean, who knows? I'm just saying, you know, not to, isn't that hazard, but by the same token, it could wind up costing us bucks. It's my comment.
Precedent, because of the precedent.
Right. Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, there are some towns.
We can address, we can address. And that's what we can do. We can address each one of it as it comes. You try a temporary fix, you know, or work with it.
That particular stretch from, actually, if you follow the trail down Plymouth Street, a lot of those alleys have garages right off of them, parking right off of them. So that particular alley is a little more used than say the ones behind Ohio Street, which is not used at all and people have built on it.
That's right.
Which I would never recommend spending the money on because it's grass at this point on Ohio, the one behind Ohio Street.
So is that a motion that we?
I cannot, I'm sorry.
I don't think we can.
Well, but I understand that.
Except Rocky's.
200.
Yeah.
It's 2,850.
2,850, replace the sidewalk section of the.
Sidewalk and approach.
Sidewalk and approach of the alley. Main and.
Very good.
This is on the south side.
South side. Is there a second?
I know where it is. Yeah, I'll second it.
Been made by Sally and segmented by Bill Hamm to $2,850 repair to the alleyway approaching sidewalk between Main Street and Winfield. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. And then this is not on the town manager report, but we wanted to give you a heads up. There's a, one of our AMI meters, there's a software program out that we're very interested in. It's more expensive than what we're accustomed to. And so Karen has been studying this from the financial side of things. Bob's been studying it from the, the features it would provide us. It could do a number of things, for example, spot leaks in our system long before someone runs up that $800 bill. So we're taking a closer look at that. We're not ready to prepare, present it to you yet, but we just want you to sort of have a heads up that we're going to be bringing that one in. And I have reached the building and planning department, so I'm done.
Good. Thank you very much. We know department reports. Jeff, are you on for EMS? He's not?
No, he's not.
Okay. Terry, for fire?
I really don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Wayne, please.
What is, this report online. Can we get it?
Yeah, send your email.
Send the email.
If you can't.
I bet it won't do anything with.
Oh, because of MediaCom? I can print it for you.
Well, that's all right. Sooner or later, MediaCom will work.
You hope.
There's always hope.
Yeah. Luckily we can talk to the media.
Well, Art, nothing to bark. Amber, have anything?
Amber's at Blue Zone.
I know she's at Blue Zone.
I, I'm actually here, sorry. I am, I'm attending both at the moment. I'm attending Blue Zones virtually and the town council. So I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't catch everything that's been going on this meeting because I've been on Blue Zones call. I did just want to give everyone a heads up. Sorry, I don't know if Jenny had mentioned it, but we will be closing early one day. Just wanted to give you guys a heads up. On Monday, July 19th, we plan to close at 5:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM so that we can just have a staff appreciation day, of course, with your guys' approval.
She need a motion.
You probably need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that we accept. Are closing early and make it just one day, a couple hours.
Did you have an alternative date, Amber?
What was that? Sorry?
You have an alternative date in case it rains that day?
Yeah, that would be Tuesday, the next day.
Okay, okay. Okay, so the motion is that we close the park early.
On the 19th for probably
for customer appreciation.
Staff.
Employee appreciation.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Motion been made by Sally, seconded by Rex for staff appreciation day on closing park early on either July 19th or 20th depending on the weather. All those in favor say aye?
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you guys very much. The staff is really looking forward to it, so I appreciate it. Otherwise, I'm assuming Jenny covered this, but Culver will be having their Blue Zones money meeting on Wednesday to June 30th. So just a heads up as well. That is all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Utilities. Bob?
We covered Bob with the Rocky Bachman and the AMI meters. Do you have anything else, Bob?
Bob, are you on?
I am. I don't have anything further. Thank you.
Bobby? Boards and commission? Land commission?
Land commission is did our approval on the annexation of the property south. That went through the planning commission, so that would be coming to town council next. And that that hinged on them getting BZA approval to put out there, so they get informed to get to the council. And annexation. One thing, planning commission is going to be working on is quite a while. When a building was torn down, we allowed that to be rebuilt on the same footprint if it didn't meet setbacks. And that sort of thing. Do not believe that's what the law allows, nor do I believe that's what we should be allowing. That was made as a state law for particular instances, as if a storm came through, tree limb tore it down or whatever, not if someone buys the property and decides that they want to put it on the same place. So we'll be working on that. It's probably going to take us, you know, maybe a couple of months or so to get it the end of summer. But with all the investigation things we have to do, that will be coming to the town council, so you know. Town manager will be awesome. And that's all we got. The planning mission, BZA. We met on the property for it took two and a half hours. It's the only thing we discussed. But you should be aware and be very proud of that. They did an outstanding job. Working, giving their direction, standing their ground. I thought they did an excellent job. I I wouldn't have thought going into that that they would come out with a positive vote. But with all of the things that stipulations that they put in and and drew that string tighter in that bag. I thought they did a great job with that and and came up with a good product for the town. So we wanted to let you know that. Other things we've got, Jim, you sent me an email or something about property and saving a town. Or I'm sorry, Jefferson Street, Boatswitz.
Yes.
I don't have that. Could you, if you could resend that?
Because I I sent him a letter saying, we know you got a demolition permit, but it doesn't seem to be happening and you need to get ahold of me.
He didn't pick that up though.
Yeah.
Registered letter, he didn't pick it up.
Came back.
Just so that you know that I'm on top of my job. About 2:30 today, I was leaving town, going through town, and I happened to see his vehicle. I followed him to his house on State Road 10. Wasn't stalking. But we probably had about a 30 minute conversation. He said that he never got notified, didn't know that he had a registered letter or anything else. I told him to expect something to be coming and what it was about. He and I get along fine. I don't know why. We have good conversations, I mean, and cordial, but he feels that he's going to fight the town on on this whole thing and that he knows some good attorneys that are his best friends. So you should be prepared with that. Now, he did say that he got a building permit earlier in the year and he went back to the Marshall County Plan Director and asked him how long that was good for. The plan director told him it was good for two years. And and building permits or even a demolition permit, they are good for two years. Supposed to start your construction within six months. You've got two years to complete. Police generally have that window. But this is a demolition permit. We already have an order, so he thinks he's going to stand on his two years. He filed March 26th is when he got permit, cost of $25 to basically kind of hold us off. So we'll get that letter out to him. I can post it on his house. If his car is there, I can call him. I can, I've got his personal phone number. I can send it as an attachment to a text either way, so we'll make sure that we get that to him. The other thing that we have going is 438 South Ohio Street. And did you get anything back?
Yeah, he contacted me and I told him he needed to fill it in or whatever. And he acted like he was going to start going to repair. He wants to repair the foundation so he can build something on it.
Repairable, it's beyond that.
Thinks that he can. And I said, well, I don't know. I'm, you know, I'm not a building commissioner.
He will have to, he will have to give us an engineer's report on what is there.
Well, I told him he needs to contact you, which didn't excite him very well.
And I don't know why.
Yeah, well, anyway. So and he said he was going to do that. And that was last week, first of the week, or even before that. I was going to ask if you'd heard from him.
No, have not. I don't know how that foundation can be repaired. It is, walls are caving in, wars coming up. Before, at this point, before he gets to rebuild on it, he's going to have to get an engineer's report to tell me. Don't think that he did that.
We interestingly had an engineer with us today. Bob stopped at that property and he said, holy cow, that's dangerous. And I asked if he thought it could, anything could be done.
He didn't think it could be either.
No, well, he was just like, oh, my gosh, this is just insane. You guys need to do something about it. That was his gut reaction to us.
And and I think that's what we'll get. So I think we need to keep pushing that forward as quickly as we can.
One of the walls has fallen in.
Yeah, it started to cave in, yeah.
It's completely caved in and it's almost undermining his truck that he's got sitting there now.
There's so much on the property right now. It's really kind of unbelievable, even more since I sent the grass nuisance letter. So I think we're going to have up the property.
Yeah.
In general, aside from the foundation issue.
My plan that we focus on one, get that taken care of. When that's done, then we go to the overall property. He's got two parcels there.
Yeah.
And the parcel that the building was torn down on where the foundation is, is separate from where he's got all of his junk.
Right.
I wanted to try to keep them separate and keep focused on one thing rather than the big picture, so we didn't lose.
The neighbors behind one of the parcels, they have been complaining up at town hall because they're seeing mice in their garage and they feel like it's coming up with that property.
I've got now two things that want to touch base with you, so sometime, the next few days, let's figure out.
I'll be back in the office here on Thursday, or I can call you tomorrow.
Okay, well, tomorrow's not good for me and Thursday might be okay.
I think that's, anything else, sir? Good job. Keep on, keep it up. Development Commission?
We discuss scheduling now.
This, did they pick a date for that, Sal?
We have not.
Okay. I'll be there if you want me to be.
Okay. Tree Commission, is there anybody here or online for the Tree Commission? Moving on, clerk's report?
I just have a couple of invoices over $2,000 to ask for your approval on. The first one is Smith Bell and Fox Service. It's for $4,550 and that was to repair the downtown clock. So hopefully all four faces read the sayings and not go time versus past time. The second one is Marshall County Economic Development Corporation. It's the third quarter payment to them for $2,500. The third one is Troyer Group for $7,669.65 and that's for phase two work. And then I'm going to also, it was not included on claims, but I would like to process two more bills from them. One is for $10,450 and the other is for $6,355 and that's for phase three and the additional work that they were doing. We had gone to the the redevelopment commission last night and asked them if they would like to support it. They're still making a decision, but these need to be paid. So if I can go ahead and get them paid and include them on the claims for this meeting. If they decide that they want to support that project, we'll do a, we'll do a transfer.
Move, let's back, let's back up a minute to the clock. I thought there was money.
There, yes, some of that money is for the gift from the gift fund. And then some of it was out of the general fund. So there wasn't quite enough money to cover all of the repairs.
Okay, okay.
So so the whole, I mean, the claim is for the whole, whole amount, but part of that comes from the gift, part of it's from the general.
It's not all, it's not all general. That's, that's my.
No, but now there's no money left in the gift.
The gift funds.
The gift fund for the clock is, is expired.
Okay, thank you very much.
Time to expire.
Clock expired too, that's why it didn't work. Okay.
Especially for the last.
Been made by recent segment by Billy's to repair a claim over $2,500. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Yes, ma'am. Turners report?
I only have briefly to announce and appreciate the kind of congratulation comments you all made when we first started that the Port 15 Lake Shore property sold to a third party at today's sheriff sale conducted a little earlier. So the bid was actually $1 over the minimum bid. The money, the process is the money goes to the sheriff and I understand from the that the sheriff's already received it. Then from there, the sheriff will send it to the Marshall County Clerk and eventually the clerk will distribute money to the Marshall County Clerk. And then the, you know, funds come into the town, that dollar be held over for the land. Process shouldn't take very long, so hopefully we'll reimburse some of those things when we can. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Very much. Anyone here present for utility shut off or ordinance violation? Any none? Time for citizen input. Is there anyone online for citizen input? If not, please state your name. Please speak. There are no citizen input from online. Is there anyone present for citizen input? Nancy?
I'm Nancy Miller. I'm here representing Miller's Sweet Corn, which I hope you all know. And if you don't, I hope you'll come and see us. As you know, for the last several years, we have placed a sign for our business on the corner, northeast corner at the flasher. And I'm here to request that you give us permission to get into place the sign. It is a very important part of our business. We could not have anticipated what has happened in the course of our business. But we find that many people who come to town for a week or two rely on the sign to come and to know that we're here. And the other purpose that's, that's very important is that many who live here in town know that we're open and they can come out and and get our product. If they're, you know, farming is, is a, is an unreliable business as far as time goes. So some days we're not open and on those days, we cover up the sign so people know not to make the trip out. And I do feel like that's, you know, a service to the people of the community, saves them driving out when we're not there. And so I would just respectfully request that we be allowed to place our sign as we have for many, many years on the corner at the flasher. Also, I apologize for my late arrival. I was online, but it kept cutting out. So I got nervous, so I just came.
You coming?
We've supported this the past several years.
I agree. Thank you for coming, Nancy.
Well, thank you. We appreciate everything you do for us. Appreciate it very much.
I move to be approved, the Miller's Corn placing the sign on the corner of and Lake Shore Drive. Jim, as a temporary measure during the season.
There's second?
I second.
Motion made by recent segment by Billy's that we prove Nancy placing the sign up there from Miller's Corn. All those in favor say aye?
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We have tassels, so we'll be low.
Are you doing that tassels?
Well, they're, yes. Yeah, we're about four weeks out.
Okay, thank you for that information. Any other citizen input in the room?
Yeah, Joel Samuel.
Yeah, Joel.
111 North Lake Shore Drive. Sidewalk, is it supposed to go even with the sidewalk or is that pretty much done?
Can you say that again, Joel? I'm sorry to hear you.
The back fill on it. Is it supposed to be even with the sidewalk or is it just that gravel we put in yesterday?
State Road 10?
Lake Shore.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The, in front of the analog.
Bob, are you still on?
I am. I think I heard him. They were in town today doing a backfill and stuff like that. They got 1,000 yards of sod coming to roll out on Thursday. And if he's talking about the driveway, yeah, it will get touched up a little bit of limestone, make that transition easier.
Oh, transition is fine. It's better than the one in parking shop. It's more of the sidewalk and the grass area. Is it going to be even with that or is there just going to be a drop off similar to? Is it going to be even with that or is there just going to be a drop off similar to the roadside?
No, it'll be filled in with, uh, topsoil and sod will be rolled on top of it.
So I was just curious about down the road, what to do with it, some water.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, Bob. After your question, Joel. Thank you. Any more citizen input? Moving on. Council issues. Sally?
I don't have any.
Bill?
Nothing.
Rich?
Two hopefully brief ones. Um, first, I would like us to consider, um, making before the town, um, legislation identified it as a federal holiday. Or as a holiday, um, in our H R policy and then also wherever else to get holidays or formal holidays. The process would be to, to do that.
You'd have to approve it for next year, I would assume.
When we approve the holiday schedule.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, all right, so raise it then. Second, um, I don't know that there's a resolution to this, but I was contacted with a concern by a couple of the merchants on Main Street regarding the Lake Fest parade. We approved the permit, I think at our second meeting in March. It was a question last, over a year ago, we decided that when we're going to close down Major Fair O'Fair, that all of the parties affected by that in emergency event personally contacted, and the form, the event form was actually revised to include listing who was contacted when they were contacted. When the event form came before us at the second week, or second meeting in March, I don't believe that section of the event form was completed and they had not, the, the sponsor had also not talked to a number of department heads. So we, we said, we approved the, the event conditional on those things being completed. Um, the concern that was raised by several of the, the merchants on Main Street is that no one had contacted them about the great as the date of the event, yeah, closure, um, which is a condition of you who did that. At this point in time, I don't know, it's, you know, there is, it's sort of late in the game, but I, uh, I'm concerned that they were not contacted and that was part of the condition. Suggesting for a resolution, I'm not suggesting that we alter that, um, approval, but I think we should express to the, um, the sponsors that, um, they need to fulfill their responsibility and that communication going forward.
I can dedicate that to the Lake Fest committee, Lake Fest committee, I assume. I, I can look on the actual permit and it would have someone's name on there.
I think, I think Rose is the one who appeared on behalf of the, and I think the Lake Fest is also being sponsored by the chain. You know, I, just communication wise, I think, uh, I was going for the merchants and that, and that would be an area, and none of them had been contacted by anyone, they found out about it by the social media.
I was going to say something about their signage that they really, some of the signs are in right of way. And they really do need to get that approved with the permit or come in separately on that. I didn't go around and take them all out because I, you know, we've allowed them in the past, but technically they need to come back and ask. I'll say something about both of those. I may call you on that, just to be clear, because I think that was a meeting that I missed when that was approved, pending that. See if I can find the actual event permit.
Twenty second, I can tell you after the meeting exactly when it was.
I just have one thing. There's, um, there was a recognition that there's some kind of fungus in the lake, uh, this past week. And some people's kids got rashes and some dogs got diarrhea and, um, but I didn't see any signs or anything up anywhere.
Yeah, we closed the, um, dog beach.
Yeah.
And put up signage. Amber attended the meeting with the environmental council group, so they've advised us to close the dog beach and put up a sign, and that's what and then we cut up a whole bunch of signs, but.
Right.
There's one right there.
Yeah, there's always been that dog beach.
No, I mean, it's a.
I would just, I would just talk about, in general, people should, there should be some communication. But we just found out from neighbors.
Yeah, I think the environmental council.
One issue that they didn't want us to jump the gun on communicating beyond closing the dog beach was that they were looking at the toxicity level.
Right.
Because apparently there's a difference between how toxic it could affect a dog versus a human. Dogs are very sensitive to it compared to humans. So they didn't want us to panic the public about it until they came back with this toxicity test that they took. So they were going to reach out to Amber once they got that back.
Okay.
So they basically said, close the dog beach and we'll get back to you on what, that was sort of how they wanted to deal with it.
I was just trying to make sure there was communication coordination going on, it sounds like.
Yeah.
We'll work on it.
And we, we would, if we wanted to make, like, say you might not want to swim this week or whatever, we'd have to put it all over social media down on the beach itself.
Yeah, this isn't like sharks or anything.
It just, I mean.
It does affect some people.
Besides the, the blue green algae, um, people should be aware of the fact that the, the beach does weekly, park does weekly testing for E coli. And had any events for a couple of years, but a few years ago, there were some closures that were done as a result of that, that this park does weekly testing for E coli and the, and the swimming areas.
Yeah, Amber asked if we should be doing testing for the algae and, like, should that be a, a weekly test or, and basically the environmental council said there's always algae, so you'd always be getting some kind of, um, response on it, but the toxicity isn't an issue, so they did test for that.
Yeah, it could be a slippery slope once you start going down the road.
Okay, I'm good.
The only thing I, I have is I want to commend our town attorney for the excellent work that he did on four fifteen Lake Shore Drive and not only there, but in all his efforts in helping us, you know, work with the unsafe properties, but thank you again, and I just want it in the minutes that we really appreciate your efforts and, and hard work.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Jenny, do you have anything else?
No, my brain is full.
Karen? Your motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
The same. motion made by Sally and talking about Rich, Karen, all of them, favor say aye?
Aye, aye.
Make sure y'all sign the book and.